Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to our February 12th regular meeting of the Rutherford Board of Education. It's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mrs. Ahmed. Dr. Alati.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mrs. Labrera.
Here.
Mr. Mazone.
Here.
Dr. Racine.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
Mr. McLean, you have a quorum.
Great. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting, public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside the Borough Clerk's office, mailed to the Herald South Bergenite, and the Record newspaper filed with the Borough Clerk. Hard copies of the agenda are available in the meeting room, and the agenda is posted electronically on the district's website. Regular meetings of the Rutherford Board of Education are broadcast without editing during a two-hour segment as limited by Comcast time constraints on Tuesday evenings. The video link can be found by opening the Rutherford Board of Education link, clicking on Public Meetings, and then Videos. Any member of the public who wishes to view a DVD of the video can make that request in writing to the Board Secretary. Okay, so our first item is to approve the minutes from the last board meeting of January 22nd. The meetings were not included in the packet, or were included in the packet but are not included in the agenda. Does anyone have any comments on those? Any edits to the minutes? Okay, ask that they be entered into the record. Okay, so we are going to move directly into our special presentations tonight. We're excited to get into those. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hurley to introduce our first presentation.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. We have a few presentations tonight, and the first one is to recognize our students from Lincoln and Washington schools who have had their artwork chosen and on display up at the Board of Education office in Borough Hall. We show artwork from our students, rotate them throughout the schools throughout the year, and I personally thank the students because every day when I go in, I get to see some great artwork and our talented students. So I am going to bring up, Mr. Ursulisi is here, and he will be assisted by Ms. Labrera and Mrs. Klossey, who's the art teacher, to present these awards. And as they're making their way to the front, I also want to commend Mr. Ursulisi and the entire art and language arts program, the PTA Reflections Contest, which is a countywide and then statewide ultimately, competition. We had, I believe, ten county winners, if I counted that right? Eleven county winners, and Mr. Met, some of his students perhaps, because it was TV and film, it was literature, which is writing, and it was photography, and also fine arts. So congratulations to those students. We do recognize students who win on a county and state level in a June meeting throughout the district, but I wanted to mention that and congratulate Mr. Ursulisi and all the teachers, two of them are here tonight in his department. So, Mr. Ursulisi and Ms. Labrera, if you'd like to join him, microphone's yours.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Ursulisi. I'm the supervisor of the English Language Arts Department and also the Fine Arts, Practical Arts, and Performing Arts Departments. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Art Department to recognize students from Washington and Lincoln School who are very happy back there. I see a lot of smiling kids. If you get the chance to go to the second floor of Borough Hall on Park Avenue, these students all have their work displayed prominently. So if you're visiting the Board of Ed for any reason, or Tuesday's at 2:00 PM if you're in municipal court because you have a parking ticket, maybe that'll make you smile. Not that I've ever gotten one of them, but it does, it's just really wonderful for us to be able to take a look at some of the amazing work that our students do under the tutelage of Mrs. Klossey. So I'm gonna let her speak a little bit, and then we'll hand out some awards.
It's great to see everyone today, especially some students over here from Pierpont School. It's great to see you all. It's really exciting what we've been able to do in now kindergarten, it's our second year of doing art with the kindergarteners, as well as first and second grade and third grade. I've been at Washington and Lincoln School for many, many years, and many of my classes, I just want to say here, I'm just so excited to be able to share their art, and I love seeing their growth and development. So when students then leave from my school and go to Pierpont and Union and the high school, a lot of times their work goes on. I was here for an art meeting today, and just going in the rooms there and seeing the names of students that I had win first grade, so it's really exciting. So, the following students, if they're here, please come on up. Very excited for Shanu, Siva Kumaran, Siva Kumaran, is Shanu here? Okay, congratulations to Shanu, fantastic. May I have Adriana Blair come on over? Michaela Casenzzo? I thought she was here.
Congratulations.
Come on up. Yes, of course.
Facebook official now.
Evica Jane? Haley Ledwith? Haley, come on up, give her a nice round of applause. Emma Miguel Rustiero? Emma? Brooke Miller? Congratulations. Maya Tapia? Maya? Sophia Tran? Sofel Dalou? Sofel? Carmela Holazo? Carmela? Simon Lee? Simon? Arnav Rajadev? Arnav? Lorelei White? Come on up, Lorelei. Angelina Yan? I saw Angelina, come on up, Angelina. Catherine Yan? Sisters, come on over. Angelina Zamara? I saw Angelina, come on up, Angelina. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone, and thanks for supporting the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, the artists and the teachers and parents, for your support. Our next presentation is in our series of schools presenting projects of the principal, the teachers choosing. We have tonight with us Pierpont School, and here is with us Ms. Carrion, the principal, Mr. Placenti, the assistant principal, and the teacher of the STEM classes, Mrs. Saxon. So, Ms. Carrion?
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to our artists. Since we reorganized the district, we included cycle classes beginning last year, and STEM, I think, is one of the classes that generates probably the most excitement in the building, and a lot of that has to do with our wonderful STEM teacher, Mrs. Saxon. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to her and our wonderful scientists.
Anyway, good evening, Mr. Hurley, the Board of Education, parents, students, fellow colleagues. Thank you, first of all, for changing the layout. I made some of you work very hard, I'm making Mrs. Carrion work over there, some new interior design, so I appreciate that, and for allowing us to be here. This is really the student's show, I'm kind of just their tour guide, but they will be showing you the projects they've been working on. It's a ten-week cycle course, it's the second year. We focus on, you can click. So, when people think of STEM, they think science, but we infuse a lot of math concepts, and it's really not just the final product. What I love about being a STEM teacher is that, and I don't like to use this word too much, but it's okay to fail because we learn from our mistakes, and sometimes we produce the best products from our mistakes. So I kind of grill that into the students, that it's okay when things don't work out. So, I want them leaving STEM class so they're ready for fifth grade and sixth grade STEM, and when they get to the middle school, that improvement is the main skill that I focus on, and collaboration skills as well. Click. So we're going to start with the fourth graders, if all the fourth graders want to come up. We have Meet, Delilah, Sophia, Samuel's not here tonight, Josh, Matous, John, and Daniel. So, before we get to the project, there's a whole engineering design process involved, and each, there's two fourth grade groups here, so they're going to talk a little, a tidbit of what we do, but obviously we don't have all night, and I know we have a lot to talk about tonight, other things. So, the children, the students, they research about earthquakes and plate tectonics and what causes it, and we do a lot of activities on the importance of tower building, and they are engineers that are tasked to design a structure that can withstand the shaking of an earthquake. So, this is one group's, they write a children's story, they learn about what causes earthquakes, and then they write a children's story. Now, they're not going to read this, but we just wanted to show also how we use, being one-to-one has been such a valuable tool for collaboration, for research, and they're able to display some language art skills with this writing piece. So that's one piece, click. And then, coming in from third grade, when they get to fourth grade, it's great being one-to-one also because they have a sound working knowledge of Google Drawings. So they plan out some sketches of their tower. This is actually a final sketch, so this is Matous, your group, did you want to talk about this a little bit? And you can show your tower?
So, this is our planning sketch, and it's seventy centimeters tall. There's a lot of cross braces, there's three floors, one box, two boxes, three boxes, there's a base, and we'll, like, support it up. There's a roof, and we have Google Drawings, and we sat with those.
Very good. Do you want to talk about your structure?
Yeah, well, so ours is exactly almost the same as yours because we have these, like, rotators and three blocks high, but we didn't have time to do the roof, so we just did a
All right, so we build this, it took about three weeks, three, four weeks. And then we are in the testing phase, so we're going to just show you how we test the tower. So this simulates an earthquake, and you can shake it very violently, which will represent a high magnitude earthquake. The students will demonstrate what we've been in class and tested it out. These two structures did survive the earthquake. This is the Saxon earthquake. We give it a max of five point two, which is, see, we're on, depending on what we're sitting on, but the structure did survive. So what, in class, we tested it, we would shake, the earthquake lasted about twenty seconds, fifteen to twenty seconds, but we'll just demonstrate a quick ten-second earthquake. That's a low magnitude, you can get a higher. Now that's a very good structure. So what we teach the students is that, you know, earthquake, you have a different one, you have to build a frame to absorb energy, so we, there are a lot, we did shake it more violently in class, but the tower's going to shake, but this is a standing structure that survived the earthquake. But that's it. So then, what would happen is we build it, and it's great. Now that's like a three, two, it's all right. Those were our fourth graders in here. And now we're going to move on to the fifth grade's little different project. Fifth grade, you want to come up and explain? So in the fifth grade, so we build upon the engineering skills we learned in fourth grade, and we move on to fifth grade, and they're going to do most of the talking here, so. Okay, so, one of the groups is just going to explain the objective of the project.
The objective of our window design was we needed, we were hired for a, for a window design company, and they needed us to build a window to see kind of how it would resemble, so.
So, they want to see how fast it can spin.
Okay.
And, um, it is a renewable resource.
Okay, very good. So we focus on, we learn about non-renewable resources and alternative sources of energy, renewable resources, and we focus on wind energy as a source of mechanical and conversion to electrical energy. Now, in this class, they work with a mental budget of twenty dollars, and we have a school store in my classroom, it's called Wind Russ. So what's nice is in fifth grade, they design their windows with whatever materials they want, and they can test it and redesign consistently. So this is Sebastian, Jack, Delilah, and Dita, you want to talk about your budget and your window?
So, the budget sheet represents how much can be bought, and how much money it costs, and how much we use, how to keep a balance of everything we're using.
Okay, we also, like, sectioned out, we have to type it all in, so we, it doesn't stand, where she would tape on all the items we could buy, we show, and write the prices we need them, so if we wanted to buy something, we would write what we needed, write the price, how many of them we needed, if we needed one, we would add all the prices, and we'd write how much we have left, we would drop it in our, what we want.
Adrian, is you on?
So, we were speaking about how we improved on our windows. So, first we started our basics with three blades, yeah, with a sketch, with three blades. But then, when we did our testing, it was.
When we tried to build it, it actually really, really much failed.
Yeah. So, we started, when we built it, and decided we were a product, we tested it, and it's been as fast, so we decided to add three more blades, and it started spinning faster. So we have cards to tell you all about it, do it.
We also, we wanted to add a door, but we wanted to improve on our window with more blades, but then our phone ball kind of broke, so we added foam sheets to keep it in place.
Yeah.
So, we keep it in place without foam sheets, and, yeah. Our basic design started with three blades, and we improved on our design because our window spins really slow, and we added three more blades.
We added three more blades because our window is spinning really slow, we wanted to add one more blade, so we can have four blades, but what most of our customers had, and there's, it's.
They were adding a little more.
We took out one blade, just, that, that was a blade, it was a light blade, but our phone ball still ran out, so we added foam sheets to it.
We thought that if we took off all of the blades, it would, it would break, so we added six blades, and, and it's been much, much more faster than the three blades we had.
Got one more windmill group. They use their Google sketch to plan out their, plan out their sketch and demonstrate their final form.
While we are planning it, it seemed really easy, we just put all these sheets up together, and we think it will work out very well on our windmill, and then we start building about where we build, and everything is hard, like. At first we built these, these three things that are shaking all around, like they're about as far as we can possibly extend.
So, we use Google Drawings because it's an easy, it's the easiest way to present, considering that you don't have to download anything, and it's already marked there when you click the square made out of nine pieces. We use plastic cups for our windmill because they are good, they can hold the air together, and they don't let air through them, but they're also pretty sturdy. They're a little bit flimsy, that's because we want it to be flimsy when, because if it's not flimsy, it, the wind might, it might get, it might start spinning too fast, and it can, like, start bending and break. We use duct tape because it's a firm structure, and it doesn't require drying, like. The dabble is, the dabble Miss Saxon created, has a special home to bottom, so when we put it on the reader of the electricity, it shows how much electricity it produces when it spins.
And on that note, just, we have a little video just to show you how the windmill's actually working.
By spinning, when wind, when wind hits it, it makes mechanical energy, and lifts up the bucket of marbles. If we put it on this end, it would do mechanical, it would make mechanical energy because it would be spinning, but then here, it would be converted into electricity. So, let's test this. This will generate electrical energy, because when it spins, it will spin a little trigger over here, and that goes down through the wires and shows a signal of how much voltage we're producing. Three, two. It went, four, go. So, it's Windy the Windmill again, and now, on this, we're going to be showing how mechanical energy is being transferred to electrical energy through this. So, this is our windmill, Windy the Windmill, and it shows mechanical energy by lifting this bucket of marbles down here, so I'm going to show you how.
Okay, those are our fifth grade. Sixth grade? So, in the fifth grade curriculum, we explore a lot of physics concepts, which they'll actually explain, and then they build a Newton car out of pretty much recycled materials, no kits involved. So we're going to start with Joaquin, Ross, Daniel, Anastasia, and Ellie, just to explain, real quick, the objective of the project. And then they're going, and what's nice about these, I have different rooms because they all have different designs, this is actually a car, well, you'll claim it's a mousetrap car.
So, our car was made out of a mousetrap, and the objective of our project was to get our car to go at least eight feet, and it has to use three laws of Newton's laws.
Do you want to demonstrate?
They have the sketch.
Yeah, they, they, this group took a while, they never gave up on their mousetrap, I hear, it worked out really nicely. So the next car we have is a rubber band powered car.
So, the potential energy is the energy that builds up all the rubber band is twisted, and then kinetic energy happens when it's released, which causes it to go forward.
Do you use Newton's first law when the car, would, when the car would move, when it, when it would use friction?
So Newton's second law is the, whether it's a four, they'll go, so we use light, we, there's a cardboard, optimistic, and now, and for.
Newton's third law is with every action, it has an opposite in the reaction. Newton's third law is with every reaction, it has an opposite in the reaction.
Wow.
Nice.
Very good. Um, and now we're going to demonstrate a balloon powered car.
So this is the balloon powered car. So you basically take the straw, you gotta put it in your mouth, and you go, oh! Whoa, it's a balloon! And then you have to put it on a cot and it's gonna be like, oh! And then you go put it down and it moves! Which is blowing up the balloon. What a car got nineteen feet, which was the furthest in the class. And then, um, this one, the, when you blow up the balloon, oh! Is potential, that boom, kinetic transfers right on through, no delay. Yeah. Um, and then, uh, first we started off with like a, like a, uh, a windmill powered car, but then like they had to do a rubber band, like catch on static, so like, come on that, oh, okay, take a half second. Like, you know what, balloons next best. And then we're like, you know what, you can make a really different straw, so like he thought, put a leg on it. And then we're like, yeah, put a leg on the straw, you can do this, you can do this if you really want. You can reverse it around or any, which way doesn't really matter. For my personal. Um, and then, uh, now we see it's really light, we got a small water, and then we have, you know, we have a shape with, um, and then we have pin wheels, so there's less friction and, um, not, so it goes nineteen feet.
Very good.
So that's all, ladies and gentlemen.
And then we've got the last car, um, they're going to demonstrate their car and then, uh, the last piece of the engineering design project is communication. We've designed a website, which, um, the only part of the website we're going to show is the commercial they made, um, which we're very proud of. So why don't you demonstrate your car and then we'll show you the commercials and then-
Uh, okay. So quickly, I'm just going to say how our car demonstrates e- energy. So you saw how there were, the balloon was blowed up for a moment, that was potential. And then when, as soon as it let, as soon as it released, it transformed into kinetic. Okay. I'm not even going to try to be funny because you guys, you guys are right away by Griffin, so.
I said, go for it.
All right, let's just go to the, uh, website thing, you know. It's down there. Oh, yeah, yeah, you got it already and I, I don't know, no. Wait, um, wait, um, go, like, hold on. There, all right, go down a little bit, a little bit. I, there, there's the video and just, just try, click it, click it. Creative Engineers presents a revolution in car design. This car will change how you view non-petroleum oil cars. The creative car! Hi, I'm Ian from Creative Engineers and today we're going to talk about our car, the creative car. It's a really good non-petroleum oil car, it's, it's overall, it's always a car priced right. This is one of the fastest non-petroleum cars ever, going as fast as fifteen feet or beyond! Now this is a car you can trust. We finish at the top of any test. Creative car, it's just bad. As you saw from the video, that is a very good way to get information across, but sometimes people don't use stuff like that, but you don't want to plaster it everywhere so that people hate it. And if you're doing something like, say, that Iowa's or something like that, it's not important, um, the best way to improve upon it is just to find new features, try new things, improve upon it as much as you can, remove things that you don't think are appropriate, and, and when you're happy with the final pro, with, with the product, you could just call it a day. But you, you also want to get your message, you also want to advertise for, just for this example, but you don't have to advertise, it's highly recommended, but don't overadvertise. So there's this Bob's Discount Furniture, not important. Okay, okay, so I'm just going to try to make it, it's good, where they, where this, this one person in it already knows all the lines, don't let that happen, just, just trust me, do not let that happen. Well, that's kind of it, so, yeah.
Thank you again for carving out this time for us. Um, congratulations to all these students, they make my job very easy. Um, thanks again.
Creative Engineers for-
So, so, uh, thanks to all of our presenters, uh, this evening, that was, uh, that was, that was terrific. Uh, you know, as, as, as the board, we spend a fair amount of time talking about programs, but it's not until we see the students here talking about their work, uh, that those programs really come alive for us, so, so thank you. Um, and I do also want to say that, um, as, as exciting as STEM is, sometimes one of the most challenging things is to talk about it in a way that's informative and understandable and certainly entertaining, um, and I think you, you nailed all three of those tonight, so, so thank you very much. Okay, so now I know you are all here to hear about the budget, which is the next item on the agenda. So what we're going to do is we'll take a short break. We would encourage you all to stay, uh, if anyone would like to stay, particularly those folks who were doing the budget spreadsheets earlier tonight, uh, for, for some, uh, some feedback and input. Uh, we will, we'll move into that in about a minute, so if you'd like to stay for that portion, you're certainly welcome. If you'd like to, uh, to exit left, please do, thanks.
Hey, Shannu, see.
You pleased with yourself? Say hi to Mr. Roland.
Oh.
He's famous. Saw him in that magazine.
Good job, Ross.
I like your man.
Yeah, just to my-
In the video I saw, he was like jumping in.
Nice job, Jack.
Jack. Come on, man.
They can. Just like your dog. I always take your thoughts about it, right, I know many things that you can do here. Very good, a good grace, he did a good job this day. You're right. It was good.
Four.
Uh, yeah, terribly. I have, I have, I just, I have a great plan. And I always want to get a secret word for great job, and on the other end.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and?
I think it's a good idea. Ian's lovely. I haven't seen him, I know him from the widget blue, and I recognize him here, but go ahead.
Okay, I think we're ready to continue with the meeting. Okay, so the next thing that we're going to do is move to the report from the student representative. Mr. Sullivan?
Okay, let's see if I can be exciting as, um-
Where's your car?
So, um, last week, uh, on the eighth was the senior fashion show. Out of fashion show history, we raised the most money, so the fashion show is for project graduation and further senior funding, so that was a huge help for us. The twenty-first is, uh, Rutherford High School's French Soiree. Now, this is an elegant gathering for all the French clubs and classes for, uh, French culture and customs. The tenth and eleventh are HS Presents Cinderella. Tickets go on sale March first, so come out and support, please. Moving on to sports, the boys swim team just lost in the quarterfinal tonight, um, so their season is over, however, they did win their league meet, that's the fourth year in a row they did that. For girls swim, they won at the quarterfinal, which was a couple, a couple nights ago, and are moving on to the NJSIAA semifinal, which is next week against Burnsville. Uh, as for track, nine athletes qualified for the state group meet. And basketball, boys are fourteen and eight and girls are fifteen and five. The winter sports season is coming to a close, so we look forward to our spring season. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulate, uh, Danny for, um, being part of a school record-setting, um, relay team in the, uh, this winter season into our track, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great, Danny.
Okay, next we are up to the budget presentation, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, I, I don't have a PowerPoint for you this time. Uh, this has been a very unusual budget season, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is that our budget is very much a maintenance budget, we don't have any major initiatives proposed, it's really just maintaining what we have, so Bulldog Academy, the, you know, the pre-K programs, all that stuff will be continuing for next year, that's, that's the intention of this budget. But we don't have any- Okay, I thought I was right in there, but-
Is it better?
Well, I'll just start over since I just started. This has been a very unusual budget season, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is that, uh, this is very much a maintenance budget, so we're looking to maintain the programs that we have, there are no major initiatives here, uh, planned for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, um, which, uh, that's where things get a little tricky, trying to pull together the budget, is quantifying and, and fitting them into, uh, both physically and financially into the budget. But the other issue is with the state, because as you know, we have a new governor this year. By law, the governor's budget address has to be done by the fourth Tuesday in February, which this year is the twenty-seventh. And then the Department of Education has two days after that date to release state aid figures, so we can't really finalize the budget to receive the state aid figures. But because we do have a new governor in place this year, uh, there is legislation in Trenton right now to extend his deadline for, uh, for presenting his budget address till March thirteenth, that's a two-week extension, which means that we're not going to get our state aid figures until March fifteenth, um, which then pushes every other date out. I, I understand they may be trying to compress the timeframe somewhat, but, uh, right now it's all just a big question mark right now. So, you know, that's, that's kind of impacted, you know, what we're trying to do here as well. So, uh, as I mentioned, the governor's budget address, and I'll say this is still in Trenton, the Senate has approved that motion unanimously, the, uh, the Assembly has sent it to their budget committee, who is supposed to be looking at it this week, so there should be an answer this week, and I'm sure if it makes it to the governor's desk, he'll sign it. So that's a two-week delay on the budget address, two-week delay on the state aid figures. The, uh, Board of Ed was scheduled to approve the budget submission on March twelfth, but if the state aid figures don't come in until March fifteenth, then obviously that's not going to happen, so that'll have to be rescheduled, not sure how, it'll depend on what the calendar actually looks like. Similarly, the, uh, mission of the budget to the county office was scheduled for March twentieth, that will also be pushed back, but I don't know how far. County approval of the budget was due no later than April twenty-fourth, that may get pushed back, but like I said, these, uh, dates might be compressed somewhat, the review process may be compressed. Public hearing, uh, scheduled for April thirtieth, we may have to push that back, but I have the feeling that one may stay. So, uh, anyway, I'll keep you posted on that, um, but that has created some, you know, a little bit of difficulty in getting this done. However, in building the budget, let me just run past, run through a couple of, uh, priorities here, a couple, uh, factors that we're considering here. State aid, there have been rumors of a reduction in state aid, but always couched with the language that, well, we don't really know, but, uh, the last word I heard is that we should probably assume that state aid stays roughly flat. Local tax levy, I, at this point, we're going to assume we're going to go as the law permits, which is a two percent increase over last year's, uh, local tax levy. Any other sources of revenue will be the same as we've had in prior years, capital reserve and that sort of thing. Um, on the expenditure side, as I mentioned, it's a maintenance budget, no major initiatives, we're going to be maintaining all current programs, no major adjustments to staffing next year. Health benefits, we're looking at a fifteen to eighteen percent increase. Capital expenditures, we've got a whole list of things we'd like to get done, we try and use the capital reserve figures for that, the capital reserve balance for that. Main projects are, uh, these are the priorities and we expect to get these into the budget. The Yankee gutters at Union School, that will be on either side, the Belford or the Springfield Avenue side, those are the most critical sides. The air handler, replacing of the air, air handler here at the high school in the two-thirty gym, that has been inoperable for a while now, and replace the second floor boilers also at, at the high school. Uh, those projects come to about, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, just in terms of other things to consider, like I said, these things aren't, well, no, I didn't say this, but, uh, these things aren't all that exciting, but as I did say, this is very much a maintenance budget, so it's not a whole lot exciting to talk about. Uh, but we do have to consider budgeting election costs for next year, we're looking at a, uh, possible referendum in October, um, so there are costs associated with that. Our November election doesn't have any such costs, because now we're piggybacking off, off the other elections, you know, the state and the local elections, but the October election will be just us, so, uh, we have to, you know, plan on spending something for that. In addition, uh, we head into, the board heads into negotiations next year with the Rutherford Education Association. We should consider a, uh, negotiations consultant, uh, we had one last time because the REA had one and we felt it, you know, the board felt it was appropriate to, uh, you know, to, to come in with the same firepower such as it is. But so that's something else to keep in mind, that that is coming up faster than, uh, than we realize. And finally, one relatively small initiative is, uh, we're looking to, uh, get into file archiving here. Right now we have a big room down at Pierpont School full of paper. It is inadequate to our needs. It is inadequate to the requirements of the state for our record-keeping, the, the state's requirements for our record-keeping. And it's a, uh, and it's poorly filed, it's poorly organized. Looking to get this, uh, to get this taken care of. This is something that we, we need to do. So, uh, so we're looking to build that into the budget, too. So, that's, that's what I have for tonight. Are there any questions from the board?
On the filing that needs to be adequate, what, what do you do that? On different type of films and on this, I don't understand.
Well, like I said, right now, it's all on paper. It's boxes of paper. But, we'd like to do, this is a two-stage process. Uh, we're looking at a company that can take all of our files, all of our paper files, bring them to their location, which is up in Oakland, New Jersey. Uh, they can catalog it, they can store it, they can barcode it, and we'd have a list online of every file that they have.
Scanned?
No, it's not scanned. This is just stored up there.
So, it's out of us, our building?
It's out of our hands. Their building is secure, it's watertight, it's bomb-proof, it's, it's everything it should be. The second phase would be the, uh, scanning of documents from point X on into the future, so that when we pay a bill, for example, we've got a purchase order, we've got an invoice, we've got a receiving document, scan it all in. It's, uh, indexed by certain pieces of information in there, in, in those documents, such as the vendor name or a purchase order number, and then we can, we can look it up online. Uh, it would be, also be, a copy of it would be filed, would be available electronically, and, um, and the physical copy would also be stored up there. So, uh, it, it is very much twenty-first century, and it is where we need to be. The state does have certain requirements for archiving of public documents, and, you know, we are not where we should be. Anything else? Yes. Dr. Alani?
Um, you mentioned, uh, replacement of the air handlers and the Yankee gutters at Union School. I'm just wondering, are those predicted as part of a preventative maintenance facility plan? Or were they just sudden new expenditures?
No, these have been, these have been bubbling up for several years now. We did, uh, we have a comprehensive list of all the projects that are needed, and we did prioritize them, and you know, A, B, C. Most of them are in A, they, they need to get done. But, some of them, we put into C, which are things that might be either taken care of or made obsolete if we proceed with the, uh, with the referendum and building renovations. So, so obviously, we're not planning any of those at this point.
Just a point to clarify, your, your first point about the, the governor's address being moved out two weeks, we don't anticipate any, any impact operationally to the district as a result of a three-week delay?
No, it's actually a two-week delay, but no, no. It's just a matter of pulling together the budget and meeting their, their timelines.
No, no. I don't have any comments.
Okay. So, what we will do, um, is we'll have a report from the superintendent, a report from the board president, and then we'll open the, the meeting up to the public. So, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Hurley.
Thank you. Couple of, of announcements. The Union School STEAM team, uh, which is STEM with arts involved, uh, they won the BECS IQ robotic state championship over the weekend. Uh, if you remember last year, they also, uh, won a state championship and were invited to the, uh, international championship that's held out in Louisville. And, uh, this team of four students and their advisor, Mr. Helfenstein, will once again be invited to participate on that, um, international level. It's international because there are teams, not only from other countries who, who travel, but also some of the work, some of the countries take part online. So, uh, congratulations to them, uh, second year in a row. Want to also mention that the REA for the second year will be holding a March Madness Food and Fun Day. Last year, it was in April, this year is in March, March tenth. Uh, it's over at Pierpont School from nine in the morning to twelve noon on Saturday, March tenth. Uh, admission is two, um, non-perishable food items, uh, for adults, one for children. Uh, the, the goal is to highlight some of our programs, but also to help the food pantry, the Rutherford Food Pantry, uh, who often, uh, we, our students do a lot, and our faculty and staff do a lot of contributions to the pantry, but as is well documented, in the, um, non-holiday time of year, a lot of times, uh, their supply is diminished. So, this was a good way of, uh, having a little fun for, in, in, for our students and, uh, parents in Pierpont, showing off some of our programs and, uh, getting a lot of donations of food for the community. Uh, in your pack, it was a summary, interim report on district goals. There'll be one at the end of the year. I'm, I'm happy to say that we are, have made considerable progress. In fact, in many cases, have already reached, uh, those goals. And those goals centered around the one-to-one, uh, wellness, uh, writing, writer's workshop, uh, integration of our special ed programs into co-curricular activities. I want to just go over a few things regarding the facilities plan. Uh, we had an excellent couple of weeks of meetings with, um, the Epic, uh, the project management firm, with, uh, our PSA, the accounting firm, with, uh, I visited with, uh, three superintendents in the area who have gone through, uh, facilities projects in, um, very recently, in the last year or so, and have, have met with, uh, people and staff, and heard from some people in the community. Right now, we're still in the process, as you know, in terms of our due diligence, in terms of looking at plans and, and, uh, refining them and, and reviewing them in terms of, of cost and scope and things of that nature. Uh, tonight, the board, uh, will be asked to approve submitting plans for review to the State Department, as we have said, uh, repeatedly, and we'll repeat it again. This is a step in the process, it's not a final determination of anything. It gives the state, uh, the opportunity to look at the, the plans, to then talk about, uh, what they would approve and what they would approve for debt reduction. And then, that information comes back, and that factors in to whatever decision, uh, the community and the board makes going forward in, uh, Lake May or Jim. So, I want to make sure that's clear, uh, to everyone. Uh, the, the only thing being approved tonight is the next step of the process of planning and reviewing and revising. Right now, we're also in a position where we really want to get the word out. We want people to, uh, look at the website, look at the plans that are there. Uh, there have not been major changes since what was presented in September. Uh, we are, we've been talking about it, and we'll continue to talk about it at board meetings, PTA meetings, at my, uh, video reports that I put out, uh, so that people are, are aware. Uh, there's been, um, stories in the newspapers, stories in the district, uh, news that goes out. So, we want people to be aware. Uh, there will be a meeting, um, in April, tentatively, right now, April twelfth at Union School. I invited Epic and PSA to be at that meeting. And again, it's not, uh, it's not gonna be a repetition of what we talked about in September when we met. It's going to be more of a discussion about, uh, a shorter discussion on the plans and more of a discussion about process and what would happen if we decide to go forward in terms of, of timelines and things of that nature. In meeting with the people I've met with around the county, uh, it, it is very clear that there is a common, um, system of best practice in terms of how to proceed to do these studies, and then, depending on what the board decides, how to proceed going beyond that. Uh, one of the things that, um, I found was commonality in terms of, of developing communication, uh, developing plans and dialogue. And, uh, and that was very, uh, effective, uh, meeting. There was many things that, uh, these discussions I had in the past couple of weeks confirmed that I thought was the way to go, and there were some things that I learned that I didn't think about. And, um, I, you know, I feel very comfortable in, um, if we go forward of how to, to work on, on, you know, putting a whole process together. We'll talk a little bit about that in April when we meet. What I would like to do is, uh, with the board, on the February twenty-sixth committee meetings, uh, develop a little, uh, action plan of what would happen up till June, and then decide, depending on what the board's decision is, what goes on beyond June. And then, after sharing that with the committee, then share it with the entire board. We're not there yet still, right? We haven't made a commitment. But, if we make a commitment to go forward, we need to know, uh, what the process is beyond that. So, we'll, we'll have that conversation at committee on February twenty-sixth, and then we'll have it with the full board following that. We are also gonna be sending out, Les, we've got a lot of community people. Uh, if you remember, we had a long-term strategic planning committee that had maybe ten, on top of my head, about ten community members, or eight or ten community members. And we've heard from lots of folks, um, who have said they'd like to be a part of, of, of future committees, should there be the need for one. And then, there's some other folks who we think, being in terms of the administration talking, would be good to be part of a group. So, we're gonna be having a, um, a meeting in March, um, for people who might be interested in being part of an advisory committee in terms of working with us both to communicate back and forth with the community. And once that meeting is held, uh, again, there'll be a role prior to any decision for these people. Uh, if we make a decision to go forward, then there'll be a bigger role. And as we do with all committees, uh, once that's finalized, it would be approved most likely at the March twelfth meeting. Uh, potentially, it might be approved at meeting in April, uh, depending on, on timing. Okay? So, you know, there's a lot, uh, going on in terms of, um, potential plans and preparation, but really, what's going on now is just, uh, the next step, which is getting our plans to Trenton, see what they think about them, and continue with the dialogue with the community. Okay? While I mentioned, uh, committee meetings, February twenty-sixth, we are gonna, uh, I will confirm all this via email, but we're gonna tentatively say personnel is six forty-five, uh, curriculum and instruction is seven fifteen, and then strategic planning and communication at seven forty-five. Okay? But, I'll get all that out to you when it's finalized. Any, before, I have a couple of other just short, composite questions from the board. Couple of other things, uh, just to, uh, keep note, make note of. The March twelfth meeting, uh, this is somewhat, you know, we're talking about budgets and facilities and buildings, somewhat trivial, but nonetheless, you know, we want to look our best. The, the yearbook picture will be taken on, uh, March twelfth prior to the board meeting, so we'll be here a little bit early for that. Uh, the changes to the, uh, chief school administrator, superintendent's evaluation, I sent you all a link to that. And, uh, probably in March, we'll have a little discussion about, uh, the changes, and, uh, we'll go through that document, uh, depending on, you know, where we're at in terms of other, other items on the agenda, so that when, uh, the time comes to start it, we're somewhat familiar with it. And I think, that's it. Oh, I had one other thing. I left you on, um, the copy of the, of the school calendar, and, and that was approved at the last meeting, and a copy of, um, an updated list of contact information for board members in terms of committees and things like that.
Thank you. So, in terms of the, the report of the president, I, I know Kevin's not here tonight. Kevin McLean, um, sends his regrets. Again, he's, um, he's traveling for, for work. Um, I, I only have one point, and that's just to remind all of us, and also, you know, anyone who's here tonight, or anyone who, um, who is watching this online, that this is a really important time for us to be having discussions with the community about, um, what folks think about the proposals that, um, that are included in the facilities plan, um, including, you know, whether it's particular aspects, or whether it's the entire program. And this is really a time that board members want to be hearing from the community. Uh, so certainly, um, there's the facilities email, um, email address that you can, you could send that, your feedback to, uh, and that gets circulated to all of the board members. Um, but also, if you want to reach out to a board member directly, we'll make sure that we get that feedback, um, to Mr. Hurley, and then it's circulated to the rest of the board. Uh, it's very important, I know I'm speaking for the entire board now, and I say it's very important that we all hear from the community about, um, concerns, input, feedback, support, any time, any type of input that, that you have about the proposals, we definitely want to hear it. Thanks. And that's it for my report. Okay, so, moving on, we will now open the meeting to the public.
Hi. Just have a quick statement about, uh...
Name and address.
Yeah, sure. My name is Michael Jamali. I live at fifteen Myrtle Street. I'm here today to voice my concerns regarding the upcoming referendum. I recently sent an email regarding this issue, and I'd like to read it. Uh, dear Mr. Hurley, the Board of Education, um, and all concerned with the two thousand eighteen referendum, thank you for all the hard work that you do in making sure the children of Rutherford receive a top-quality education. My wife Tina and I have lived in Rutherford for seventeen years, and our children have benefited from the school system for eight years. After reading the minutes of the past few Board of Education meetings, as well as the recent post on the Rutherford Schools website blog, rutherfordschools.org, I am mostly supportive of the referendum objectives that have been laid out so far, especially with regard to the facilities and the proposals for the upgraded facilities. I understand that a good education comes at a cost, and I'm willing to support the referendum by paying higher taxes. That being said, I am concerned with the notion that the addition of some facilities might come at the cost of losing others, specifically the Rutherford High School pool. While I've not found this fact in writing, I've heard that our community discussed the loss of the pool, and I, I asked in the email, could you please clarify this concern? If so, I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss alternatives to this outcome. Uh, Superintendent Hurley, thank you so much. You responded promptly, um, and asked, um, gave, uh, provided prompt and detailed response listing out the reasons why you thought the pool could be removed, uh, in, in the upcoming proposal. I understand that the fight for space and program goes on every day, and hard choices must be made to accommodate the greater good. And I appreciate the hard decisions you make. I mean, it's not easy. After speaking with many parents, neighbors, and friends who live in our community, um, some of which have come out to show support tonight, I think I speak for all of us when I say that we do not want to stand by and watch the pool be filled for cafeteria space. Uh, the list of reasons is very long, but I just chose a couple, uh, actually a few, three, to talk to tonight. One, simple one, the Rutherford High School team was mentioned tonight. The, the, the pool team, they've been NJIC champions for the past four years, doing no small part to having their own pool. They, and future Rutherford kids with swimming aspirations desire, deserve to their own place to swim. The loss of the pool would mean busing them somewhere else, which would only, not only increase costs, but cut into their study time, and most likely end the program, in my opinion. Accessible learn-to-swim programs means kids are less susceptible to drowning. Uh, stats show, the CDC lists drowning as the leading cause of accidental death for children aged one to four. And finally, while not available in recent years, the reemergence of swimming during PE classes would greatly benefit our students as well. With proper management, the Rutherford High School pool could thrive by offering community swim lessons and activities that contribute to the emotional health and wellness, not only of our students, but our entire town. I implore you all to consider alternatives to destroying the pool. We want to support the referendum this fall. Please help us to help you get the votes needed to pass it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Actually, um, my name is Michelle Mahmoud. Been living in town here for seventeen years as well. Uh, we did not speak before I come here, but he just said and read my mind. Uh, I'm still trying to learn about the referendum. I, unfortunately, I found about it about a week or more ago. Uh, my, I have two kids in sixth grade. My kids went to this pool since they were four years old. They learned how to swim here in town. Uh, when I found out that there is a chance that this pool actually will be gone for the cafeteria, uh, I could not think of a reason to do that. Uh, I understand, talk about healthy food, and again, I'm, I'm starting to learn about how and why and how, but I just came in here to brainstorm. Healthy food, high school kids can eat in the cafeteria. High school kids, most of them goes out in town. They have a lot of specials for them for five dollar. So, it's like, you win something, you lose something by, even if we create a cafeteria here in the school for the kids, you're hurting the local businesses. So, we can look at it from different perspectives. My concern actually, and again, I'm, I'm learning about the referendum, uh, is the Rutherford High School pool. I spoke to the swim, uh, swim team director from the YMCA. They would like to see that pool stay. They would like to do it. If you have the time to go and see, uh, the swim team, it's crowded. The new pool that the Y built is not enough at all. It's not enough for Rutherford only, and that's actually, it's for the entire surrounding neighborhood. So, the Y would like the pool to stay. I have few ideas... I have a few ideas that I can brainstorm and put it in writing. My last question is, if the referendum goes through, and as you said, mentioned that there will be a cost associated with it, why are we putting the referendum in October, and we have to use taxpayers' money, when we can actually put it in November ballot and cost us nothing? Thank you for listening, and I hope you consider not getting rid of this pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a question, though. Is there a reason to put a referendum in October ballot?
Yeah, there is. If we, if we go out for an October vote, and it passes, we can bond those funds by the end of the year, by the end of December, and rates are generally more favorable in December, and then they jump up a bit in January, so we'd save some money in that regard.
How will it save money if it costs us money in October?
The interest going forward for 20 or 25 years, however, however long the, the bonding was for, would be at a lower interest rate, if we can get it done by December, but we can't get it done by December with a November vote.
Allow me to be frank, I checked with a couple of other towns, and I had them to wear many hats. One of them is, I work for the superintendent of elections, and one of the counties in the Jersey. My job is to program the election machines. Most of the time, when a town put a referendum, and not in, in November, it's because, and I'm not saying that's the case here, but 99% of the time when they do that, is they're trying to push certain group of people to go vote in certain way. Because granted, people don't go in October and vote, people don't go in April and vote. Most people vote in November and in June. So if you consider putting that referendum ever go through in November, I think that would be fair, and it will give more chance to a lot more residents to actually see it, be aware of it, and vote for it. So I would ask you to consider to vote in November if it go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Hurley, members of the board, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Can I have your name, please?
My name is Declan Mallett. I live at 114 Mortimer Avenue. I'm a resident Pagan, my wife Pagan and I are resident in the town for 19 years. I have two children, one in the, one in the seventh grade, one in the fifth grade. They're both swimmers, that's why I'm here tonight. I want to speak about the proposed closing of the pool, and just give you some information that you may not be, may or may not be aware of. As Mike just mentioned, on the, it was in the South Bergen night this week, the Rutherford High School senior team won states for, for the fourth year in a row. Even though the Rutherford Bulldogs, their swim season is short, four to five months, they, the, the Y season is year-round, which in many respects is a feed team for the high school. My kids are on the Y team. We have surrounding towns on the Y team, but we also have a lot of kids from Rutherford on that team. I was at the Y bronze championships yesterday, and many of our kids qualified for the state championships yesterday. We have, also have two, Lucas Gomez, 14, he's a resident, Alex Trent, age nine, they qualified for the Junior Olympics. This team has been built over many years by our coach. Coach Jim was retired in 2017. We now have a new head coach. This hedge, head coach was, was on the, was qualified for the Olympic team for Korea. That's the kind of leadership we have among the other coaches we have with them. He encourages the kids to dream big. He has spoke to them and said that the Junior Olympics is not an impossibility. I think if you, if we consider closing the pool, it would hurt the Bulldogs, it would hurt the Y. The Y needs the pool. Even though they built a new one in East Rutherford, it's not enough for a full swim team. We got, I'm sorry, I don't have the statistics of how many kids we have, but we've got a lot of kids. And as Mike, or as Isham said, I would invite any of you over, if you have the chance, if you have time, I know you guys are busy. If we close the pool, we will, it's something that's never going to reopen in this town again. It's going to be, it's going to be the end. On a personal note, my two kids swim. I've seen transformations in them, both physically and mentally. They're focused, disciplined, confident, and poised. That's really all I have, but I just want to thank you for listening. I know some of you here, I know some of you have kids my own age, and you work for those kids, and while you're out here, you're sacrificing your own time for your own families, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight?
Well, you took all my...
Well, come on up.
Okay, I hear all of you. I have been paying tax, Barbara Copackey, 20 Myrtle Street. I have been paying my taxes for 62 years. I have voted, been voting yes for anything Board of Education puts out. So that buys me a little bit into your minds. Okay, just slowly relax. Here we go. As I said, I wrote this, and now they keep that. I'm not in favor of getting a pool. I'd rather have a kid in a pool swimming around and playing, either with him, you know, with his friends or with his family than standing on a street corner smoking something. You could walk to the pool. You don't have to drive to the pool. Most people in town can walk to the pool. If they can, when they go to the pool regularly, they will be able to walk to the pool later on. I'm a senior citizen, and I could walk to the pool. Okay? Do something for us, too, and my friends who are senior citizens would gladly keep the pool, because it is a positive place to go, just as Mr. Hurley, who has my, has had my four children who are doing well, of course, because of him.
Of course.
Of course. Of course, he would do this.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. Soccer, yeah, oh, they're all doing better than I ever did. So we know we have a good school system, so if you're not going, if you're going to get rid of the pool, I want a better pool. Okay? A better pool. Oh, I could find a place someplace. Everybody bought, knocks down and builds beautiful castles. See, this is not my speech, because, so I have to make it up. So they build the castles in town, and what do they do for us? Not a thing. We're losing the feeling of why I came to Rutherford. So, successful people, we have to find a place for people who are not in sports and stuff. Three out of four of mine were in sports here in town. They made them better people, et cetera. So we have a swimming team, that is wonderful. We should also have a meeting place for families, kids, anybody who wants to do anything. I'll go back to the Heart Association, and I'll teach CPR courses like I used to do. We need it. We're unique. Lynn Hurst has outdone us, I know, and the pool is kind of cold, but please let us keep the pool. Now let me see if there's something I haven't... Oh, ponder when you go to sleep tonight, just ponder. The Olympics are going to be on. Where did they start? In a local pool, if they didn't have money? They didn't start in a backyard pool? They started where they could meet people who are every background, every color, and every family. You can clap.
Please.
I don't know how to follow that up.
I'm a comedy actor.
Jim Bonanno, I live at 176 Carmita Avenue. I haven't been paying taxes for 62 years, although I feel like I have. Just a couple of questions. Mr. Hurley, I haven't had an opportunity to see the plans. Is part of the plans to...
They're online.
They are, because I looked a little bit last night, so excuse my ignorance with that. Is getting rid of the pool part of this?
Yes.
Okay. May I ask why the folk, why the pool of all facilities?
Well, okay, I mean, again, this is informational, and I'm not intending to debate or...
I'm, I'm, nor do I want to.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just giving information. The main reason, there's a couple of reasons. The main reason is we have extremely antiquated science labs here in the high school. They're small, they're too small to house our student population.
Yes.
They were probably last updated in the late 1970s, and they have not been updated since. They do, do not meet the standards of the next-generation science standards in terms of space and the ability to put the, the new science technology in. As you know, we have no room to build here, unless we took away the backfield, and the backfield is another thing that is part of our daily phys, physical education and health program. It's used by our marching band, and is used by some of our sports, and is used by the community every time it's daylight, for whether it's soccer or lacrosse. So that would not be, and it's the only field we have that's ours. Yes, we do not have a cafeteria that's big enough for our students here. We could, we could only fit about 25% of our student population in one, in any lunch period, so we'd have to run four lunches if we wanted to keep kids in. And yes, we don't have a food service. We outsource our food for the, it's not just the high school, the cafeteria, we outsource all of our lunches, the elementary school to Bechtin. They get loaded up about 9:30 or 9:45 in the morning, and they deliver it to school much later in the day in a plastic tray all day. So we have an inadequate lunch program. But the main reason has little to do, less to do with that, and has to do with the need for the kind of science, the kids that you saw tonight, if you were here, in the fourth and fifth and sixth grade, are kids who are going to be aspiring, and the kids in Union School who won their national, state championship going to the Nationals, are aspiring for the type of, of labs that we, we can't give them. We don't have the space. We also are running out of room. Right now, we have, according to the state formula, about 200, almost 300 unhoused kids. That's a misnomer in a lot of ways, I'm being honest with you. Every kid has a seat, but that's how crowded we are. So we don't have places, we need classroom space. The other underlying factor is the YMCA has built a new pool. The YMCA has operated the pool almost exclusively for the last nine or 10 years. Swimming is not in our curriculum anymore for a number of reasons. One is it doesn't fit. We have, we have many more mandates from local and state and federal levels about science math, history hours, and putting the, the high school kids that didn't fit in their schedule in, in reality, that was gone about 15 years ago. Putting kids on a bus, transporting them across town, it just wasn't working, okay, in terms of the academics. So the Y has run our pool exclusively, and I know, you know, we don't know what the Y is going to do. And I don't, I'm not so sure. I mean, I know you've had some conversations, we've had, we've tried to have some too, about what the future of the Y is in operating two pools. We have a boiler that's going to have to be replaced down the road. I know the pool is cold, Mrs. Copackey, because the boiler is old and not operating very well. And that boiler is probably about 10 times the size of one we would need to provide hot water if we didn't have a pool, and that's the cost. If we were to run the pool, it is, it is a large cost, it is a large program. The pool is a 20, it was built in 1980, and the entire pool itself needs to be redone and resurfaced. That's going to be a, you know, the, the pool itself, that's going to be an exceptional cost. So, for those reasons, but the main reason is, you know, we need those, the classrooms, and I don't know where else to put them. Now, it's, the plan is, is still a, a vision, it's not a final plan yet, and what the board and everyone wants to hear is what community members have to say. But, you know, the, the thing is, it is a hard decision to try to, I'm, I'm, my daughter was a swimmer, you know, I was a father of a swimmer, and she was a very successful swimmer, in, when she was in high school, and, and then swam a little bit collegiately. I know what it's, I know about the sport, I know what it takes, and I know what most schools do have to get on that bus and go somewhere else. I, I get that. And this has been, as the principal here for so many years, and a coach here for so many years, I do recognize the value the pool has brought to our interscholastic team. But that said, that's middle of November to the middle of February, two hours a day. We have 187 days of science. So we have to look, this is what we're trying to balance.
Yeah.
And those, and that's the other side of the argument, okay? I mean, and, or the, or the discussion. And those are the facts that we have to deal with, the public has to deal with, and trying to come up with, what's the best path going forward for our kids.
Right. And I think that we're here tonight to communicate with you all with this, and I would reiterate what Mike Jamali said, where we are here to support you guys. We all really do appreciate what you do. I have a daughter at Union School, and you guys give up your time, and we all do very much appreciate it. We have a great school district. But I would just hate to see us lose such a great resource in our town, and, I don't know, are the architectural plans finalized?
No, no, no.
They are not?
Where, nothing's going to get finalized until the board decides, probably in June, because that's when we're going to hear back from the state, what they think about the plans. And even then, plans, when I say the board's going to decide based on discussion we all have, are we going forward with the plans as they are? Are we going forward with all of the plans, some of the plans, none of the plans? And certainly, there's always time to revisit plans.
Okay.
So there's nothing final. Nothing will get final, really, until people vote, but nothing will get final from what's going forward until probably June. And that's not any reason other than that's when we're going to get all the information back, to make a decision based on cost, time, programs.
Okay. And just, just to finish up, as you know, referendums are very difficult to pass, and it takes usually parents of the kids that are in the school at the time. You know, there's different groups in the town, and some always vote no, some always vote yes, and you have them in between. What I would say is, I think that this pool could be a lightning rod against this, and I would just want you to be aware of that. A lot of us would really love to support this going forward, and I think that there's a lot of facilities out there that we would never lose. You know, I was a, I coached football for 20 years. I could never see us putting a parking lot over our football field. Therefore, I would never want to see us put a cafeteria in our pool. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Well, thank you to, to all the folks who came out tonight and, and shared your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving on, we will, yes, yes, Mr. Sullivan, you are certainly excused if you need to go do some studies. But make sure it's studies.
[laughter]
Okay, so, moving on to, to new business, let's see, Mr. Healy, can you take us through the personnel report in Mrs. Ahmed's absence, please?
Tonight, we have, we're moving 13 resolutions in all, and as listed in the agenda, we have two resolutions to accept resignations, that's one and two. Number two has a correction, it should be teacher assistant at Lincoln School. We have one resolution to invoke a 60-day termination clause as stated in the individual's contract, that's number three. We have one resolution to extend an unpaid child-rearing leave, that's number four. One resolution to extend a long-term substitute, that's number five. One resolution to approve a part-time clerical assistant, that's number six. One resolution to approve a library assistant, a part-time library assistant, that's number seven. Two resolutions to approve part-time teacher assistants, that's number eight and nine. And one resolution to approve five substitute teachers, that's number 10. Number, one resolution to approve a substitute teacher assistant, that's number 11. One resolution to approve payback of sick days to a retiree, that's number 12. And one resolution to approve travel reimbursements, and that's number 13 in the agenda.
Any discussion, Mr. Hurley?
Just to make sure, you know, Mr. Healy, you mentioned it, but there were corrections to number two and number seven that were given to you. to number two and number seven that were given to you in a separate sheet. Number seven, the correction was the step, the salary number was correct, but the step. Also, there was a typo in resolution number one, the last day for the clerical assistant is, was actually February the 7th, not the 2nd. So, we'll make sure the minutes note that for the 7th.
So, would you like to move those items?
We'll move these 13 resolutions.
Excellent. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
None.
Okay.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Jones?
There are five resolutions under curriculum and instruction for board consideration. One, the approval of the overnight trip for the FBLA state competition, March 8th and 9th. Two, approval for home instruction for two students. Three, approval of the list of out-of-district placements. Four, the affirmation, to affirm the superintendent's decision in an HIB investigation. And five, the approval of the list of field trips, which now totals 86.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just clarify for the FBLA what that stands for?
Future Business Leaders of America.
Business leaders, okay.
Just wait for our board secretary.
And they have pretty much annually qualified, a large number of them in the states, we had the FCCLA last meeting, we'll probably have the STEAM team coming up, and the academic decathlon team, as I mentioned, from the high school has made it to the state level. I think this is like the 13th consecutive year that they've made it out of the region, which is a very tough region to make it out of. And as you know, we've won the states twice, I think, in the last 10 years, so, we're proud of our students, and that was just, you know, filling the time for Mr. Kelly to get back to his chair.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, ready for the roll, curriculum and instruction.
Sorry about that, Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, and, Mr. Racine, Dr. Racine, excuse me, can you handle the finance report, please?
Yes, finance, first, we had a finance meeting last Monday, and the topics were already touched upon by Mr. Kelly and Mr. Hill, both the budget process and the city's money. On the agenda, we have three motions, they are the regime motions, number one is the rule bill, number two, the approval of the Secretary of Transportation's report for January 2018, and three, the list of budget transfers.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions?
Okay, Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the policy report, Mr. Healy?
The last meeting for the Policy Committee was January 22nd. Tonight, we have one resolution with 25 policies and regulations, either new, revised, or abolished, for review and approval, although these policies have to be presented one more time, as listed in the agenda. I don't know if this, Mr. Hill, again, is there any discussion on these or?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, the new, there'll rarely be this many again. Strauss ESME sends us quarterly updates of mandated or suggested revisions, as I mentioned in the communication I sent, and we were waiting to get up and running, you remember, we adopted the Strauss ESME policy in July, and then it took them, working with us, into the fall to get everything up and running in terms of the technology and the system to be able to revise and get the policy done more efficiently. So, these were two quarters, this was a July and December combination. The majority of these policies, as I mentioned, are mandated from either law or DOE regulations, and most of them are very minor revisions. You'll notice that Strauss ESME does provide a precis for each policy, which I think is very helpful in terms of reviewing to get up to speed about what the major change or, when I say major, I don't mean it's a major change, but the change that is in the policy. So, there were four policies that were not from Strauss ESME, I will mention them briefly, and then if there's any questions or discussion, we can open it up. The prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions and head injuries, that was a regulation. Our policy actually was in line with the most recent ruling. The regulation threw basically an oversight, still had the old regs in about the duration of time, that timeframe is now gone, it deals strictly with doctor release, okay? So, that is, and that policy, as I mentioned, was not only reviewed by our athletic director, but also was reviewed by our school physician and our athletic physician. The attendance, again, an oversight in making the major changes that we made, the middle school now runs the exact same bell schedule as the high school, so what counts as a full day, half a day absence, that section was called high school when it should have been called high school and middle school. So, the entire change, that 31-page document, was putting the word middle school on page whatever it was, which is why I only sent you that one page and not 31 pages. The tax-exempt debt issue is something that our auditor suggested that we have, and it has to deal with how you, which is what we would do without the policy, is how you deal with any money made from a refinance or any, you know, the tax implications of any kind of bonding that we have. And that wording did come from the auditor and was reviewed by Strauss ESME as well. And then the unmanned aircraft space, the drones, the change we made was to, twofold, one was, we only want students using drones that we provide, so we, the old policy said, you know, or student, we took that out, okay? And then the other was that, although if and when we use drones, there's many, many, as Mr. Mett knows, because he met with us because Blavos in his program, there's many federal and local guidelines you have to meet to before you can even fly a drone on your own property. We restrict it to our own property, other school activities, but we put in there that upon the approval of the superintendent, we could do something at another site. So, for example, our marching band is in a state championship, the facility has the ability to allow a drone to get better aerial pictures, and we want to do it, that's, you know, that's a sanctioned site, and we could approve that. The other policy would have prohibited that. And the other policy of note from Strauss ESME was the one about board members' use of social networks. In reviewing that, you know, this directly impacts the board, but sharing it with the committee, there was nothing that we saw, the committee or I, in that policy that would in any way impede anybody's right to be an individual, have individual rights, but what it reminds people of in lines with the board's code of ethics, the need to, you know, be careful of certain things that could cross the line. And there have been, unfortunately, in some other municipalities and boroughs, some very near us, some ethical, ethics charges filed against board members for things they posted on their own social media. So, I think that's not a bad policy, it's common sense, it's what most of you would always do anyway, but it gives us a little more reminder of it. So, those are the revisions. As Mr. Healy said, all policy has to be read and voted at two meetings before it becomes adopted. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I have a question about two of the policies. One is the board member use of social networks, and the other one is on student tracking devices.
Okay.
So, I guess, starting with the board member use of social networks, so, in the second paragraph, it defines social networks, and so it includes email, could be contentious whether email's part of social media, but it's saying for the purpose of this policy it is. So, I guess my question is on the second page of that, number five, it's suggesting that when using social networks, board members are advised to refrain from having communications through social networks with other board members regarding any board of education business to avoid any potential violation of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. And if I'm interpreting that correctly, it, because email is considered a social network, it's, seems like it's saying that board members cannot communicate about any board of education business through email. And in reading some other policies in towns nearby, one of the things it says is, has a clause in there that says unless it's of an official nature and serves the mission of the district. So, the way it's written right now, it sounds like it's saying that board members can't communicate at all by email about any board of education business, which I'm not sure if that's something that we would want, but I just would call that into consideration.
Let me cross-reference that with the ethics and double-check that, and then if there needs to be an amendment, we can make that before we do a final approval.
Okay.
Okay? And again, that paragraph was?
So, it's paragraph number five, and so I guess the idea is?
Yep, I see it.
Yep. And then it also relates to paragraph number six, because then it says, it continues by saying, "Board is suggested not to respond to any postings regarding board of education or school district business, or respond to any question or inquiry posted to the board member, or posted on any social network regarding board of education or school district business." And then there might be a place to insert unless it is of an official nature and serves the mission of the district.
Well, the rest of that says it shall refer any such question or inquiries to the superintendent of schools, which is what the ethics says you're supposed to do. So, that to me isn't in conflict, but I think the conflict you're raising in number five makes sense, because previously, they defined email as social networking. So, if you're right, so if you use their network, I think we're confusing, or the policy may be confusing, email strictly as a social network. I want to just check the exact language of the ethics and with that, in terms of how you should respond to someone, okay? And that's less in, see, for example, I don't disagree with you in number five, it doesn't seem, as long as we don't have five people communicating in email, to be able to communicate with a board member via email seems to be very practical. And we do that, right? When we have a committee, we go back and forth, and board members are back and forth, but we're under the number five, so we haven't violated any. That's why when I send something out to everybody, or Mr. Kelly does, you know, we remind you, don't reply to all. If you have a reply, reply to me, or reply to the board president, whoever it may be. So, I think maybe we have to redefine social network. I just want to check number six, the exact language of the ethics, to see if that's okay or not, okay?
Are we going to remove that one from tonight's?
Well...
I feel better if we did.
We could table it and do it in one more meeting, it's not a crushing, right? So, we'll remove that one, and then we'll come back with either revised language or if the language shouldn't be revised, we'll discuss why, okay?
Thank you.
Now, the question about the tracking?
Actually, I had another question on this one before we move off. So, just to clarify, where did the language for this policy come from? Because this isn't, this isn't a regulation, is this consistent at the state level, or was this recommended by Strauss ESME?
Well, Strauss ESME was based on NJSA, the citations that are, which are the board ethics requirements. And there have been two lawsuits, a lawsuit and also ethics, successfully filed ethics charge against a board member in the district for posting things about board business on his social media.
So, it's just referring to the underlying ethics code?
Right.
Okay. I also had a question when I, when I read this policy, while I certainly see that it's consistent with the ethics code that we've all discussed and adopted and I think we all certainly believe in. We have discussed whether, whether we should consider having a board representation on social media, not for the purposes of having, engaging in a public dialogue, but for the purposes of sending information out to the community to encourage greater participation at the meeting or greater awareness of what's going on. So, I...
That's not in conflict with this.
Okay, so, I just want to confirm that it's not, because in that case, it would actually be an official board voice or board account, essentially, that would be driven by a board member?
Right, to that point, anything that goes on our website gets put out on Facebook and Twitter, right? So, if the board, as a whole, right, wanted to put out a letter to the community, like when I put out anything to the community, it goes on the webpage, and then it goes out on our Rutherford School District, we have a Facebook page, you know, we have it. So, the board can certainly post things in that, through there, through our IT people. So, that can be done. This is talking about individuals posting things that may violate what their duty is as a board member on their own account, not putting something on Rutherford's school district's social media.
Okay.
Because the idea would be that anything that went on the social media that's Rutherford School District would have to go through a process from the board, like would go through, in theory, the board president, and come through my office, would go to the IT. So, if there was something there that was going to be, let's say, you know, off the chart, where it was going to be unethical or a violation of something, someone along those lines could catch it. And if not, then we all would be accountable for that. This is talking about your own personal.
Okay.
But we'll get more clarity on this. In fact, what I, you know, I'll get more clarity on this, we'll table this one, so when we vote later, we'll remove that, whatever that number was. 0169.02. And then we'll come back. Keep in mind that this is not a mandatory policy. We don't have to have it. If you think that we are, you know, covered by the ethics, and we don't want to get into this, we don't have to have it, it's a suggested policy. Okay? And there are policies that we don't include because they don't apply to us, we don't think they're necessary, I mean, we don't have to do this. So, we can think about that, I'll get the answers, and then we can decide what we want to do. Okay? And you got another question?
Yeah, the student tracking device is 5516.01, so, I guess to recap, to make sure I understand it, and then I'll ask the question, assuming I'm understanding correctly. So, basically, the idea is that this policy recognizes and allows students who want to have a GPS electronic tracking device on them so that they can basically be tracked while they're in school, at a school-sponsored event, or on a school bus. However, what is not being permitted is any type of one-way or two-way audio and/or video communication or taping, which can be a part of GPS.
Right, but that would be a violation of FERPA. So, you can't have a student who is broadcasting what other students are saying and doing in a classroom, what a teacher is saying to another student, that's a violation of FERPA. So, what this is saying is, and the one part you didn't get right was, I don't think any students want this, the parents want. So, the parents who want to have the tracking device on their student, right, that's fine, they could do that, but if we find out that the kid is broadcasting, right, from class, then we're going to say, wait a minute, you can't do that, right, because it's a violation of federal law. Well, without the policy, now we're into a whole, you know, debate with somebody who says, well, what do you mean? What do you mean? What do you mean? So, yeah, that's...
So, my question is just that, so, in, where it's not permitted is generally in a general education population where it's lecture-based, and I guess my question is, in a special education population where it's considered private, one-to-one, there have been districts that, where there has been permission given, if it's for reasons of a child not being able to relay their own, you know, what's going on in school, anything related to any incidents, and I've read a little bit of research about that, and I don't know if that's something that needs any consideration.
No, because that's, you know, first of all, that's a very rare case, but IEPs trump everything. So, if you have an IEP, the only thing that really can sometimes, you know, overwrite a policy or a regulation is something is in the IEP which is needed for that student, so that would not be a problem should that arise.
So, may I make a suggestion for consideration, since this is a particularly voluminous packet of policies that we have tonight for first reading, and we know that we have questions on at least one of those policies, could we essentially table the first reading tonight, give our, give the entire board one additional cycle to review the policies, and then come back next month for first reading? Would there be any sort of timing issue associated with doing that?
I'm looking at that right now, let's see. I'm looking at that right now, see. No, I mean, some of these, the majority of these, for example, services to non-public school students, well, that's a law, we have to follow that. All the long-range facility plans and all, for example, the long-range facilities plan that we're going to hopefully approve tonight, follow this new law. I mean, this is already in, in the books. So most of this is, there isn't much reason to discuss or debate, but we, we could certainly table the whole package. I mean, but...
I, I think, just given the, given the size of it, it would, it would just maybe give the full board a little bit more confidence in putting it forward. Not that we have any, not that I'm aware of any concerns with the packet overall, just that since it is an out-of-view, ordinary size, in terms, just in terms of the number of policies, to just give everybody a chance to fully, fully review it. Anybody have any objections to that?
I just have a question. When's the next update due, though? In other words, would we be?
Well, the next update we'll be getting probably March, end of March. But again, if there's a policy that really is time of the essence, we'll just move that. If not, we can hold back on the others. Keep in mind that we talked about, even in terms of moving things along a little more quickly, some of these one-word, two-words, done by law, we have no choice. Rather than getting with committee, we're just going to move them in, right? So, you know, if something comes along that we need to do, we don't have to, we could add it and explain what that is. It doesn't really, none of these are critical policies that change much of anything that we're operating with right now. They can wait. And we have policies for most of them that aren't very different from, you know, the differences are things like, I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but just so you understand, sometimes language, as Dr. Alati pointed out, sometimes, you know, you write, even the lawyers and the policy experts write language, and then they say, "Wait a minute, that seemed clear, but it's really not." So for example, on the bus drills, and the bus aid responsibilities, and bus training, and all that kind, nothing changed there, except it defined who has to provide the training, and who has to take care of the drills, because most of our buses are contracted out. So if we're contracting through the South Bergen Jointure, it's the South Bergen Jointure that has to do the training, not us, even though there are kids and we're paying them a check, right? But if we own the bus, we have to do it. That wasn't clear last time. They used terms like "the district" or whatever they said. So now, how are we supposed to train drivers that we don't hire, right, or we don't even see? So, you know, so sometimes these are just clarifying languages. That's what's going on. I mean, the policy, it's not like the Jointure, as an example, isn't doing that, right? It's going on. So nothing's going to get changed if we table this for a while. But I would suggest that the next meeting, we, you know, we move forward because we want to make sure we're as up-to-date as we can be. Okay? In the meantime, I'll look into this one in terms of clarification. And this is one, again, it doesn't affect anybody in the district, except the nine members who sit on the board. If the board feels it's not necessary, that you follow the code of ethics without it. No children are affected by this, no faculty, no staff, no, this is strictly a board policy. And it's recommended. So if you have concerns about it, we can decide.
So will this count as a reading, then, or not?
No, we're not, well, it's a reading, but we, not voting. We're going to table it. So we'll have it on two more times.
Two additional times.
Thank you.
I'm not going to send all this again, right? Okay, we'll be on two more times, but, you know, don't throw this out, okay?
They'll kill the trees.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the Buildings and Grounds report. Mr.? Okay. Can we have a motion to table the first reading of the, the policy changes? Second?
Second. This is a vote to approve tabling that motion.
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now let's move to Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Mazone?
So the Building and Grounds Committee met back on February the 5th, and I'll have two motions this evening to put forward. Those items will be discussed as part of the review of the minutes. One of the topics discussed, Mr. Kelly had already went into, was the 1819 budget proposal, the priority items to be submitted, so I won't trouble you with that. We did spend time discussing the referendum and the submission of applications to the State Department of Education, as well as amending some of the long-range plans. I did want to take time to point out that this evening is part of the first resolution, we would be submitting, or authorizing PSA to submit our architect of record, the application for four schools. That would be the Union Middle School, Lincoln Elementary, Washington Elementary, and the Kindergarten Center, and anticipating that we would look at the application for Rutherford High School, as well as Pierpont, for the March 12th meeting. Another item that we had taken time to discuss briefly was, the superintendent was engaged in discussion with the mayor, some other borough representatives about the condition of the fieldhouse down at Memorial Field, just some steps to be considered to increase the functionality and use of the fieldhouse. So I think I've covered Resolution 1, which would be, again, authorizing the board's architect of record to submit the applications for the four schools already named, and then Resolution 2, amending the long-range facilities plans for the six schools, as well as the Bulldog Academy. So I'd like to make a motion, put those forward, unless the superintendent has any comments.
I just have a couple of comments, just to update the board. As was, I think, said in the communication I sent, and also in the minutes of the meeting, the reason why we are doing four plans tonight and the other two in the next meeting is to allow EPIC a little more time to go through the plans, because part of what gets sent down with the application are projected costs, because the state looks at that, and then they say, "Hey, we're going to approve X amount in terms of debt relief." So we want EPIC to have more time, since they were approved at the last meeting and came on board then, a little more time to look at the two bigger projects. And that was at their suggestion, their request. It doesn't slow us down in terms of any timeframe that we're on, okay? As we discussed before, the long-range facilities plan, we have it in your policy packet tonight, is something that's required of all school districts, and the state has had the system closed for seven years. You can't have been able to get into it, even though every school has an obligation under the law to update it every five years. And if you're going to do a big project, like we're thinking of doing, then the state works with you, work around to get into updating, but they won't look at your plan until that long-range facilities plan is done. And that includes things that, you know, are on a list that may or may not get done, because you're projecting out five years. But they just want to see things that you're thinking that might happen in the district. And then quickly on the fieldhouse, the fieldhouse is a borough property, is owned by the borough. It's the building that's across from the tennis courts. It's used by our football teams, it's used by our baseball teams, it's locker room. Our visiting teams go in, as we discussed. It is in need of a lot of, not even tender loving care, it needs really serious loving care. And we did meet, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Moreno and I, met with the mayor, with Councilman Milehi, and with DPW Director Seidler. We met to at least take a look at it and, and have a discussion, and that's all it was, you know, what, what are some things that could be done? I am sure there's going to be further discussion, and like, you know, they say, it's always about the money, right? So we're going to have a discussion. But it was just to go down and physically lay eyes on it. I haven't been in that, last time I was really in the locker room was probably in 1998 or something. It doesn't look that much different, you know, and, except for 20 years of, 25 years of wear and tear. So something has to get done, but it's a question of how and who. So we had a meeting to start that dialogue.
You have another meeting set up?
We're going to wait to hear back from the mayor. He was going to talk about some of the concepts he had, and, you know, what we might be talking about. So this is very embryonic, but, I mean, something does have to get done.
Is there a hope to get it done by football teams?
Well, we'd like to, but again, you know, it's, it's not our place, it's not our building, it's not our budget. We certainly want to be, you know, we want to be a good partner, want to work together, but we have to see what, what's out there, and what, we're not even sure yet of what we're talking about. That was the reason of that meeting. Visit more than a meeting. Okay? That's it. And just for the record, can I just also add, because anybody who watches, I want to repeat what we've said so many times. What we're approving tonight is a submission of plans for review. Nothing is final. It doesn't mean, I mean, what we submit tonight, the board and the community might change, they might decide, we're not changing a word of this. It might be, but we're not doing that tonight. We're sending it for review.
That's exactly what I was going to just say, so...
Well, I see Mrs. Kapaki, when she said, "People steal," I'm good at doing that. Yeah, steal the people's...
As long as we say it over and over again, to be very clear. Okay. Okay, so did we move those items?
I did put those two items, motions, one into it forward.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Librera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, legislative update. Mrs. Jones?
Yes, but just before, we have a board member that made the front page of the Rutherford Magazine.
We can all do that, by the way.
Very athletic, but that's quite a tribute.
Congratulations.
It's a wonderful story, and to his coverage, so, and two other of our students, Anna DeCesar, who's an athlete, and Katrina Binda, who went to South, to South Africa and back. It's a very good one. Well, well done by Jennifer Solisi, too. The, there's a legislative update, is the Child Abuse Hotline requires the Board of Education to display information about New Jersey Department of Children and Families State Central Registry, a toll-free hotline for reporting child abuse in each school of the district. And it goes on to say, "The information must be on a poster and displayed in each school in at least one high-traffic, highly and clearly visible public area that is readily accessible to and widely used by students." That's up and coming.
That'll be like the other countless things. They'll send us a poster, you know, and then we have areas in the buildings where we put the posters up. So once we get them, they'll go...
Career Assistance for Drop Out, as Assembly Bill 1845, requires each school district that includes any of the grades nine to 12 to provide to the Local Workforce Investment Board a list of students involved in those grades who left school prior to graduation and did not indicate an intention to, an intention to complete high school. This list is to be forwarded to the Workforce Investment Board by February 15th and July 15th of each school year. And just one more. Electric school buses, that authorize the use of certain electric school buses and provides that the maximum overall width of an electric school bus operated in New Jersey is not to exceed 102 inches, including accessories. Current regulations restrict the width of all school buses to 96 inches. The increased permissible width set forth in the bill would apply to electric school buses exclusively. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to, again, open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay. So moving on, do we have need for executive session? No need for executive session. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll follow up with those committee meeting dates to confirm them, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.